I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for September the 10th. Would you go ahead and take role?
Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Present.
Commissioner O’Neal.
Present.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Chairman Wiley.
Here. Thank you. I’m going to go ahead and take a point of privilege and offer the floor to Commissioner Nesbit.
Thank you. To the citizens of Independence, it has come to my attention that on August 27th, 2024, the Planning Commission meeting, that my actions may have been considered offensive. I did not attempt to offend, and I apologize for any harm I have made caused.
All right, thank you. All right, for those of you who wish to speak tonight, please remember to address all comments to the Chair. If you have any questions for the staff or to anyone up here, please address them to the Chair as well. Keep all of your comments brief and to the point, please. And as we all want to speak and be heard, if anyone said something that you want to say, just say you agree with it, and only share new comments. Anybody in the room who thinks they may want to speak, even if you have a thought that you may speak on your behalf or about one of the cases, please go ahead and rise and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth to the best of your ability before this hearing tonight? Say, “I do.”
I do.
Thank you. All right, we do have two cases to continue, so I will take a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move that we continue case number 24-100-18, rezoning at 12800 East Kentucky Road, to be continued till October 8th.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, hearing a second, any discussion? All right, take your role.
I’m sorry, it’s the 15th, not the 8th.
The 15th, I stand corrected.
Really? Well, the 8th is the second Tuesday.
It’s just the way the calendar was. We have a late second meeting that’s at the end of the month, so.
Okay. All right, October 15th then. Would you take the vote?
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O’Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman Wiley.
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. We have a second case to continue. I’ll take a motion.
I guess I’ll do it.
Case 24-125-05, rezoning PUD 19300 East 37th Terrace.
Second.
Think you have a second? Would you take the vote?
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O’Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
How come we don’t have any minutes from last meeting?
Because the meeting was so long, at the last meeting time, they needed additional time to prepare before they present them, so they will appear at our next scheduled meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
What was the case number that we discontinued, please?
The case number for Kentucky Road, it is...
I think the first case you continued was the Kentucky Road one. Secondly, you did the one that’s number one.
Case number 24-100-18.
Thank you.
All right, the first item on our agenda tonight, continue case 24-1012, rezoning at 21101 E 78 Highway. A request by Carajota LLC. Is there someone here to speak to this case?
I need to do a presentation first.
Oh, yes, you do. I’m so sorry.
So, we’re going to do cases one and two together as one presentation. They’re for the same property. One’s the rezoning, and the second one is the comprehensive plan amendment for 21101 East M 78 Highway. Applicant George Kapke. And the two actions are, of course, the rezoning from R6, single-family residential, to I1 industrial, and then the amendment to the comprehensive plan. So, the vicinity map, as you see here, shows the location of this property. Not too far southeast of the college area. Zoning map here shows the existing zoning for its R6 use and the surrounding zonings, commercial zonings to the north and residential industrial zonings around to the south and to the east. The comprehensive plan here indicates that this property is a... was identified in the past as being civic. So, given the civic use, the zoning wasn’t as important. It was a... the Little Blue Valley Sewer District property and was zoned residential. Now that it’s in private, commercial hands, it needs a zoning that reflects the industrial use for the structure and business that will be there. So, here’s the notification map for that property. All the surrounding properties that were within 185 feet of this location that got noticed. And an aerial photograph showing the surrounding underdeveloped area, basically, around most of it, although some nearby development of the college and some residential farther north, as you can see. So, as far as the two requests, we’ve got... The first case is a request by George Kapke with Kapke &amp; Willarth LLC to rezone the subject property from R6, a single-family residential, to I1 industrial. And the second request, of course, by Anthony Privatira to amend the future land use plan map from the civic and public use to the industrial. As far as the background, for many years, the subject property had been owned and used by the Little Blue Valley Sewer District. The property has been zoned R6 or a similar designation for the majority of the district’s ownership of the property. This was not an issue at the time because utilities are permitted by right in all zoning districts. In October of 2021, the property was purchased by Carajato LLC. Later in December of 2023, that company... A company that manufactures frequency reference products called Novus Power Products applied for a business license with the City of Independence. Novus Power Products was denied a business license because their use lied in limited manufacturing is not permitted in the R6 district. In wake of this denial, the property owner has been working to update the zoning of the property and to allow for the manufacturing use and to accommodate Novus Power Products and any future potential tenants. As far as the property history, the subject property is unplatted. When zoning was introduced to the City of Independence in 1965, this property was designated R1B, single-family residential. The property north of the subject property was designated M1 industrial. In the 1980s zoning map shows the area was R1B, a single-family residential, and remained this way until 2009, when the UDO was adopted and the area was designated R6. As far as the physical attributes or physical characteristics of the property, the majority of the property is open space. Three buildings sit on the western portion of the property. The property is accessed via Powell Road. However, south of M 78, Powell Road is a private street. The property... Excuse me. The property may be legally accessed via Powell Road because of an access that has been filed to allow that access. As far as characteristics of the area, most of the property surrounding the subject property is undeveloped. Little Blue Parkway runs nearby to the east. North of the subject property is the... Sorry, northwest lies the MCC, Blue River CDL Driving Course. Consistency with the Independence for All Strategic Plan. Rezoning this property is consistent with the Independence for All Strategic Plan. One of the objectives of this plan is to grow business and industry. By rezoning the property to accommodate industrial uses, will allow Novus Power Products and other local manufacturers to continue to grow and operate within our community. Comprehensive plan, as far as its guiding land use principles, are applicable. This comprehensive plan envisions the future land use of this property to be civic and public. This was likely put in place when the property was owned and used by the sewer district. Now that they have sold the property, this future use is unlikely to occur. Since the amendment to the comprehensive plan of the future land use map has also been submitted with this case, the amendment seeks to update the intended future use to industrial to ensure that the current land use is in alignment with our comprehensive plan. As far as historic and archaeological sites, these are not apparent issues in this area. Public utilities, all public utilities are present and are on or nearby this site, and there are no CIP investments that are currently programmed for this area. Okay, so we’re looking on this private street south into the property, southeast into the property, where the signs are there. This is facing east along the north region of the property. And then this is looking back north up to Drive, back towards 78. And this is facing west, looking directly from the property. And then this is a little bit closer to that building, looking to the south. And this is turning back east again, looking at the structure there and larger structure to the north. And then the right side of that and the street leading to 78 Highway. So, staff recommends approval of the rezoning and, of course, the approval of the comprehensive plan amendment as well. So, two votes that we’ll need to do on this. If there’s any other questions you have for me, I’m ready to answer any...
Any questions from commission? All right, would the applicant or the applicant rep step forward? State your name and your home address, please.
I’m George Kapke with the firm of Kapke &amp; Willarth. My home address is 15800 East 27th Street South, Independence, 64055.
What would you like us to know about this project?
I cannot add anything to the comprehensive report that the staff has given. They have given their recommendation for approval. We agree with that. Mr. Anthony Privatira, the owner of the company that owns the property, is here to answer any questions you might have with respect to the application or the use of the property or anything like that.
Would you state your name and your home address, please?
Anthony Privatira, 9900 West 159th Street, Overland Park, Kansas.
All right, thank you. Any questions of the applicant from the commission? Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone in the galley who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who’d like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, hearing done. I would close this hearing.
Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve case 24-100-12, rezoning 21101 E 78 Highway.
I second.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, call the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O’Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
Chairman Wiley.
Yes. All right, motion passes seven to zero. Do I have a motion for the second part?
Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve case 24-150-01, comprehensive plan amendment to 21101 E 78 Highway.
I second.
Right, it’s been motioned and seconded. Any further questions? Discussion?
One question. This little squiggly line, why is it so squiggly on that down there on the flat? Is it just because it hadn’t been plotted, Brian? Is that the reason why?
That is an interesting thing. That is an actual property line, and I don’t know why we allowed it to...
Is there a creek or something, or?
Yeah.
Oh, it’s a creek. Okay, that’s why then. Okay. That’s it, thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing done, call the roll.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O’Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley.
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, case number 24-100-20, rezoning 9300 East 9th Street South. Staff, do you have a report?
Yes, this is an application for rezoning of a property located at 9300 East 9th Street South. The first slide shows a vicinity map of the property located at the intersection of Oxford Avenue and 9th Street. The applicant seeks to rezone the property from R30 PUD to R6. Aerial photograph shows the property is located within a predominantly single-family use residential neighborhood located at Dead End, Oxford Avenue, and a dead end to the west of 9th Street. The zoning map shows the property is located in a district that is zoned R30 PUD, and the comprehensive plan indicates that this property is intended for residential use. The notification area map shows where notification letters were sent. The property owner, Janet Thrasher, is requesting to rezone the subject property from R30 PUD to R6. The applicant seeks to rezone the property so that they can sell the property without any issues. This property is part of Lot 13 of the Evanston Park subdivision, which was recorded in December of 1885. At the time, the Evanston Park subdivision was not within the City of Independence. The addition was annexed into the city in 1961. In 1965, it was zoned R4, designated for apartments. In 1980, the zoning was updated to R4 for high-density residential, and with the adoption of the UDO in 2009, the designation was updated to R30 PUD. The property is 50 feet wide and 100 feet deep. It is 5,109 square feet. It’s a corner lot situated off of Oxford Avenue and 9th Street. Both streets are dead ends. As per Jackson County records, the house was constructed in 1940. The house is 1,122 square feet and features a front porch with a stone support, side deck, beige siding, and a metal roof. The property is located to the west of Winter Road and to the south of US 24 Highway. It is located in a primarily single-family neighborhood. Across Brookside Avenue to the west is a Mount Washington Cemetery. Rezoning this property is consistent with the Independence for All Strategic Plan. One of the objectives of the plan is to stabilize and revitalize neighborhoods. This rezoning would bring the property into conformance with the UDO. The comprehensive plan envisions the future land use of this property and the surrounding area to be residential neighborhoods. This rezoning fits this classification. Section 14300-02 of the Unified Development Ordinance outlines the purpose of Independence zoning districts by stating that they are intended to create, maintain, and promote a variety of housing opportunities for individual households and to maintain the desired physical character of existing neighborhoods. By rezoning this property to R6, the zoning will match the structure’s design and nearby single-family uses. There are no apparent historic or archaeological sites located at this property. All utilities are present at this property, and currently, there are no capital improvement investments along US 24 Highway. However, MoDOT has planned improvements envisioned. This is a photo of the property facing north, looking directly at the building facade, facing northeast, next door, east, down the street, down 9th Street, southeast, catty corner from the property, south, looking across from the property, southwest, looking again, catty corner the other way, west, down to the dead end of 9th Street, facing northwest, towards the corner of 9th and Oxford, facing north, towards Oxford and the dead end there. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning.
All right, thank you. And for the record, let me state, excellent first job, Gabe.
Thank you.
And I really enjoyed the aerial photos, so that would be drone in the air flown by you. That’s pretty great. Thank you very much.
Actually, I was in a wingsuit.
I’m just encouraging the next generation. All right, would the applicant or the applicant’s representative like to come forward?
I forgot to mention that the applicant and their representative were not able to be present for tonight’s meeting.
All right. Anyone who’d like to speak for this case? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, commissioners, anything for the staff? Commissioner Ashbaugh?
I’m assuming that sometime in the future that this... This area, since there’s several of these properties that are zoned that way, is that going to be something that’s going to just happen? Are we going to wait for each person to come up to the Planning Commission and request this?
I mean, we are systematically, in the near future, we’re putting these on the list and hoping to tackle some of these neighborhoods. So, hopefully soon, we’ll see.
Okay, as long as something’s in the works, that’s what my question was. Thank you.
And I’d just like to add that the applicant, in this case Janet Thrasher, is intending to sell the property, so the timeline to initiate rezoning of the entire district was not feasible for the applicant, whereas other applicants, that timeline may work better for them.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner O’Neal.
This property appears to be a single-family dwelling already. I’m assuming from the picture that it looks like that, so it should fit into that neighborhood, under that zoning. Correct?
That’s correct, yeah. The neighborhood is primarily a single-family residential.
I’m curious why they zoned it for multiple, to begin with.
I think this goes back to, before 1980, we used to have pyramid zoning. Or, well, actually, even later than that, before our most recent UDO, we allowed single-family homes in multifamily neighborhoods before 2009, so it wasn’t necessary to have single-family zoning for that property until the UDO was passed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I’m going to close the hearing.
Chair.
Commissioner.
I make a motion that we approve case 24-100-20, rezoning 9300 East 9th Street South.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Would you call the vote?
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O’Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair Wiley.
Yes. Case number 24-100-20 is approved seven to zero. Next case, case number 24-100-22, rezoning at 1235 and 1233 West South Street. Could we have a report?
Absolutely. And just a quick correction that this application is for. The address is at 1235 and 1239 West South Street.
All right.
So I hope that was correct.
Thank you.
So, vicinity map of the first slide shows the property along Chrisler. The applicant, Brandon Fryer, seeks to rezone the property from I1 to R6. An aerial photograph of the property shows two buildings very close together, a garage on the west, a single-family house on the east, and a detention basin further east, a small-box discount store to the north. A zoning map of the property indicates that this property is located in an I1 zoning district and that the comprehensive plan envisions this property to be intended for residential use. The notification area map shows the addresses that were notified of the case. And the property owner, Brandon Fryer, seeks to rezone the subject property... And the property owner Brandon Fryer seeks to rezone the subject properties from I-1 to R6. Brandon Fryer, the applicant, seeks to rezone these applications for future transfers of ownership. They wish to sell the property in the future as single-family property. These properties are both part of Lot 1, Block 9 of the South Side Edition Number 2 subdivision, recorded in December of 1883. By the time it was platted, the South Side Edition Number 2 subdivision was already within the Independence City limits. The area had been annexed into the city in 1851. Over time, portions of Lot 1 were sold as separate parcels defined by separate legal descriptions outlined in the property deeds recorded as part of their ownership transfers. A garage was constructed on the west 28 feet of Lot 1, the address 1003 South Chrisler Avenue. Real estate sales records indicate the garage was constructed in 1926, but Jackson County property records cannot corroborate this. The garage on the west 28 feet of Lot 1 is currently leased out to a general automotive repair shop and is not a part of this application for rezoning. A residential house was constructed on the parcel directly abutting the garage at 1239 West South Avenue. Real estate records indicate this house was constructed in 1954. Again, Jackson County's cannot corroborate this information. Although the east 40 feet of Lot 1, 1235 West South Avenue, had been sold as a separate tax parcel, the parcel fell into a state of abeyance and was acquired by the Land Trust of Jackson County in 2002. Subsequently, in February of 2023, the applicant acquired this portion of Lot 1 from the Land Trust of Jackson County. All three tax parcels that make up this platted lot are under common ownership. The two subject properties have a combined street frontage in the amount of 110 feet. The rear property line on the south side follows a right-of-way dedicated to the Kansas City Southern Railway traveling generally southeast. The combined area of the properties is 12,117 square feet. No separate detached house can be constructed at 1235 West South Avenue because these two parcels are part of one single lot, Lot 1 of Block 9. Additionally, there is not enough street frontage between these two parcels, 1239 and 1235 West South Avenue, to create two separate lots. Staff recommends these two parcels be replatted into one lot to ensure the most viability for redevelopment. The property is located to the north of 23rd Street on the east side of Chrisler Avenue. To the west, directly abutting the subject properties, is a garage engaged in general automotive repair. Across Chrisler Avenue is an industrial lot containing a licensed construction company and machine shop. To the southwest, across Chrisler Avenue, is a City of Independence Central Garage that services and stores city vehicles and equipment. To the south of the subject properties is the Kansas City Southern Railway running generally southeast. East of the subject properties is a regional detention basin, six and a half acres in size. To the north and east beyond the detention basin, the properties are predominantly single-family of similar character to the subject properties. The area in which the subject properties lie varies greatly in zoning district and This rezoning is consistent with the Independence for All strategic plan. One of the objectives of the plan is to stabilize and revitalize neighborhoods. The comprehensive plan envisions the future land use of this property and the surrounding area to be residential neighborhoods. Section 14-300-02 of the Unified Development Ordinance outlines the purpose of Independence zoning districts by stating that they are intended to create, maintain, and promote a variety of housing opportunities for individual households and to maintain the desired physical character of existing neighborhoods. By rezoning this property to R6, the zoning will match the structure's design and nearby single-family uses. There are no apparent historic or archaeological sites located on this property. All utilities are present at the properties, and currently there are no CIP investments in the general vicinity. This is a picture facing south, looking directly into 1235 West South Avenue, the vacant lot. Facing west, the house in the 1239 West South Avenue. Southwest, looking directly into the property, can see the garage on the west side of the property, on the right side looking into the photo. Northwest, looking across the street, the small box discount store. North, across the street. Northeast, across the street, the single-family uses. East, down the street. And staff recommends approval of this rezoning request.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the staff? All right. Is the applicant here? How do you state your name and your address for us?
Brandon Fryer, 6601 Harvard Avenue, Raytown, Missouri, 64133.
All right, tell us what you want us to know about this. Yeah, go ahead and move the microphone up to the top shelf.
They did a pretty good job of explaining it. We're just trying to downzone it, residential zoning there, so we could, we can't get an FHA loan on anything, zone industrial, so it's kind of putting a hindrance on us. Somebody's living there now, so I just mean it makes sense to downzone it.
All right. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner?
The city was recommended that it be replatted. Were you going to do that?
Yeah, so I discussed with Gabe about that. The secondary lot I bought from the Land Trust was bought just to maintain. There was a homeless problem back behind there where the railroad was, and all the trash was accumulating on this lot. So I purchased it just to maintain it, and I didn't plan on building anything there. I just bought it just to make it look better. As far as going and surveying it and adding all that and all the costs that comes with that, it's just not something I really plan on doing because I just wanted to downzone the house out of it. I told them that we could possibly have a contingency where we sell it. If they want to combine it later, they can, but there's really no use for it currently to be combined.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone present who'd like to speak in approval for this case? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this case? All right. I will close the hearing.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
I'd like to make a motion to approve case 24-100-22 rezoning 1235 and 1239 South South Street.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair Wiley?
Yes. And the motion passes 7 to 0. All right, next on the docket, case number 241023 rezoning 11301, 11303, and Truman Road, and 11300 East Aaron Lane. Staff?
Thank you.
Would you like to give us a report?
Absolutely. Yeah, so there is three addresses involved in this rezoning, but two lots. Again, the applicant Brandon Fryer seeks to rezone these properties from I-1 to C-2. The vicinity map shows this property at the intersection of Crisp, one block east of Sterling at Truman Road. An aerial photograph of the properties shows a commercial structure located at 11303 East Truman Road and a vacant lot at 11300 East Aaron Lane to the west. A zoning map shows that the two subject properties are located within an industrial zoning district that abuts a residential house to the east and a C-2 zoning district with a gas station to the west. The comprehensive plan envisions these properties to be used for residential purposes in the future. Here's a notification area map showing where notices were sent for the public hearing. The applicant seeks to rezone the subject properties from I-1 to C-2. The applicant seeks to rezone these properties to lease the property out to prospective tenants and/or for redevelopment opportunities. Lot and building standards for properties in an I-1 zoning district are more restrictive than properties in a C-2 district. The applicant seeks to downzone these properties in the hopes of making them more viable for prospective tenants, buyers, and/or redevelopment. These two properties are located on two separate lots, Lots 3, 11300 East Aaron Lane, and 2, 11303 East Truman Road, including 11301 East Truman Road. Part of the Pleasant View subdivision, platted in 1927. Before then, this property was a part of a larger subdivision, Carpenter Estate, platted in 1908. The Pleasant View subdivision was annexed into the City of Independence in 1948. From the time Independence adopted its development code, these properties have maintained an industrial zoning classification. Both lots 3 and 2 are equal in size, 45 feet wide and 100 feet deep. A commercial structure on Lot 2 still exists today. The structure on Lot 2 is one-story with a basement level accessible in the rear from Aaron Lane. The property has street access from both Truman Road and Aaron Lane. Real estate records indicate that this structure was built in 1928. It features a brick facade with a parapet. Lot 3 remains vacant after the previously existing commercial building and residence were demolished in late 2019. Any development of these properties will require improvements to the current parking and loading facilities. Due to the property's proximity to a residential district and the relative smaller size, staff recommends combining these two lots into one. Combining these two lots into one would make these properties more viable for redevelopment. These properties are located at the southeast corner of Truman Road and Crisp Avenue. The properties sit along a commercial corridor and abut a residential neighborhood to the south. This building is one of the older structures along this section of the commercial corridor. Rezoning this property is consistent with the Independence for All strategic plan. Objectives of the plan include attract and retain quality employers and grow business and industry. The comprehensive plan envisions the future land use of this property and the surrounding area to be residential neighborhoods. As per City Code 1430102D, C-2 District, the C-2 District is primarily intended to accommodate community and region serving retail sales and services. By rezoning these properties to C-2, the district will match the uses of the neighboring commercial properties across Crisp Avenue and Truman Road. Additionally, C-2 zoning districts are intended to serve surrounding neighborhoods, increasing the livability of the area. There are no apparent historic or archaeological sites located on this property. All utilities are present on the property, and currently there appears to be no community or capital improvement projects indicated for this area. Facing south, looking straight at the front facade of 11303 East Truman Road, is the commercial building. Facing southeast, looking down Truman Road. Facing east, down Truman Road. Facing northeast, catty corner from 11303 north, across Truman Road, it's an auto parts retail store. West, down Truman Road. South, both properties side by side, the vacant parcel to the west and the right in the picture. Southwest, at the corner of Crisp and Truman, can see the convenience store with gas sales. Facing south, down Crisp Avenue. Facing east, into 11300 East Aaron Lane. Facing north, at the corner of Truman Road and Crisp Avenue. Facing north into 11300 East Aaron Lane from the rear of the property. Facing west, at the intersection of Aaron Lane and Crisp Avenue. Facing east, down Aaron Lane. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning request.
All right, thank you. Would you like to come back up? Would you mind restating your name and address?
Brandon Fryer, 6601 Harvard Avenue, Raytown, Missouri, 64133.
All right, and what do we need to know about this request?
Gabe did a phenomenal job yet again. I can answer any questions you have.
I have one. The building itself, sounds like it's been there for a really long time. Are we sure there's no historical value?
Not to staff's knowledge, but we can certainly look into that.
All right, thank you. Any questions, commissioners?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
So what are your plans to do with these lots, then?
Well, the city has become more strict with auto repair license being issued out, so it's, downzoning to C-2 allows me to have just more opportunity for tenants to come in, more, there's different uses for them to come in for this building specifically. It was automotive used prior to that, it's just, it's not something that the city's wanting anymore, so I'm just trying to roll with the punches.
Well, that's what I noticed, because before it had a bunch of cars sitting all over the place, that's why I noticed that before.
Yeah, so we're just trying to clean it up and just have something that can go in that is used for that building, that's a cleaner operation, versus something that's an industrial zoning.
Okay. Now, am I right reading the staff that half, one part is, it looks like you have on your, it says residential, two families, is that correct?
To the east of the subject properties, that's correct, is a...
Okay, so I must, because I don't see the vacant lot, I guess I'm not seeing the vacant lot on what you circled.
Yeah, quit, true.
Yeah. Well, I see it in the pictures, I'm just looking at what they circled, so basically, okay, so it's all I there and we're taking it down to C-2 then. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Thank you.
All right. Anyone in the galley who'd like to speak in approval for this case? All right, anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this case? All right, hearing none. I'll close the hearing.
Chair.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case 24-100-23 rezoning 11301 and 11303 East Truman Road and 11300 East Aaron Lane.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been motioned in second, please call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yep.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair Wiley?
Passes with the vote of 7-0 for case number 241023 rezoning. And I'd like to say thank you for your investment in Independence. All right, our next case, case number 241019 rezoning at Jackson Drive and Artie Mize Road.
Chairman, this is, I'm going to do a presentation on two cases. This case, 24119, and case 243105. It's for the same property. So the first is for the rezoning, the hearing for that, and then the second is for the preliminary plat.
All right, thank you.
So this is properties located southwest of Jackson Drive and Artie Mize. The applicant is James Pollard. So the proposed actions are to rezone, right now the property is zoned, a portion's own C-2 and R-6, and it would be a rezone to C-2 and R-12. Plus, there would be consideration for the preliminary plat. So the aerials photograph here, it's basically either side of the S curve there. When I go to the property map, you'll be able to see the property lines a little better. But you can see where this is in relation to where Louisville Parkway, Jackson Drive, and Artie Mize intersect in the area near the old airport. and Artie Mize intersect in the area near the old airport property. So here are the two pieces of property, actually it indicates it as three, because that northern piece is, is that C-2 that will, in fact, shrink a little bit. But there's basically two main halves, the duplex development portion that will be north of the curve, and then the smaller cul-de-sac that will be south of the curve. So here's the comprehensive plan. Yep, business park is how it's actually envisioned at this time. So here is the preliminary plat site plan laid on its side, so north is actually to the east. So you've got Jackson Drive coming off of, from the left here, off of, from Artie Mize, and then, then curving to the, to the southwest, and you can see the shorter cul-de-sac street there on the, on the east, or on the south, and then the longer street on the north there with, with also access there, a little farther north. So this is a blow-up of that north portion, and actually indicates the shaded red areas there are actually driveways where they would be located. And then this is the southern portion here with the cul-de-sac closer to the South Creek. The creek isn't, the property is in fact bisected by two creeks. There's one, as you can see, on the, on the south, and then there's another one on the north that will separate the remaining C-2 that will remain up there by the intersection, that highly visible location. So there are two, excuse me, there are two planned duplexes. There's designs, this is number one, and actually that's the side elevation there of, of that same duplex. And then here is the notification map, showing all the properties within 185 feet that received notification of the rezoning. You can see there's quite a few that are on the east there, backyards of those homes that line Old Salsa Road there, to the east. Under the project description, request by James Pollard to rezone this property from C-2 general commercial to R-6 single-family residential, or from C-2 general commercial and R-6 single-family residential to C-2 general commercial and R-12 two-family residential. And of course, the second request by Mr. Pollard is for the preliminary plat approval. After 2009, the residential portion of the property was labeled R-6 single-family residential. The C-2 general commercial portion of the property was created in January of 1981. After 1980, the entirety of the, the property had been zoned R-1B, single-family residential. Prior to 1980, it was R-1, single-family. Proposal, the applicant requests to rezone approximately 18 acres on Jackson Drive from R-6 and R-12 to build 33 townhomes and leave a small C-2 zone lot abutting Artie Mize Road. Each residential unit, excuse me, each residential unit will have a sprinkler system, and there will be a homeowners association established which will maintain the yards and the common areas. The townhomes will be offered for sale and priced approximately from $450,000 and $225,000 per side. This preliminary plat includes one commercial lot, and then the lots for 33 duplexes along with the five common lots that would be required for common areas and detention spaces. Physical characteristics of the property, the proposed development is a fairly flat topography. The existing narrow tracks located northwest and southeast of an S curve on Jackson Drive will contain two dead-end streets ending in cul-de-sacs. Duplexes with two and four car driveways will line those streets. Berms and landscaping will provide some screening from the rights-of-way. To the east of the properties, across Jackson Drive, a set of single-family homes are on R-6 zone lots. The other neighbors are multifamily development, currently under development, to the west, Arabella. To the north and northeast are undeveloped tracks of a industrial subdivision, airport subdivision, and then there's wooded lots as well to the, to the northeast, right there at the intersection, zoned C-2 and C-3. Undeveloped woodland lies to the south, railroad tracks along the south side of the property, and it's zoned R-6. As far as consistency with Independence', Independence For All strategic plan, the application is in keeping with the measures of success for improved housing conditions. This will provide a different type of housing, which is identified in the citywide housing Comprehensive plan tools and policies for the current designation. The city's comprehensive plan recommends a business park use for this site. You know, the tools and policies state that the need, there's a need to encourage locating housing near existing and developing centers of economic activity. Staff feels that residential is appropriate at this location, given the configuration of, of the tracks, the lots that, that would be developed, and the adjoining residential development already nearby. Of course, the subarea plan is reflective of our comprehensive plan for the Little Blue Valley area with commercial and industrial uses envisioned. Zoning, the small C-2 commercial track would become a little smaller. The C-2 uses allowed by our code include offices, retail, hair salons, auto repair, restaurants, various other related uses. Of course, the proposed R-12 two-family zoning classification allows for one and two-family dwellings and various, various other uses like schools, churches, government facilities, cemeteries, home base, daycare, and different agricultural uses. Currently, the property is zoned C-6, R-6, which allows for most of the same uses, save the two-family, that would be necessary for having this duplex development. Plating, in addition to configuring the rights-of-way and utility easements, the future commercial lot abutting Artie Mize will contract in size and be confined north of the stream buffer. The legal description of this property's rezoning districts will need to be, reflect the boundary adjustment. Further, we need a revised drawing labeled preliminary plat showing all the items required for the final plat, except addresses and signature blocks, plus all the structures, improvements, berms, landscaping, driveways, et cetera. Historic and archaeological sites, there don't appear to be any associated with this property. As far as utilities, all utilities are located in the adjacent right-of-way or on nearby developing properties. There are water and electric mains in the new development to the west, and in Artie Mize, and Jackson Drive rights-of-way. There are sanitary mains in the new development to the west, and in the Artie Mize right-of-way, and along the creek, along the southern portion of the south track. Flood lanes and stream buffer, portions of the northern and southern tracks along have two streams crossing them, and I'll also add portions of federally designated flood lanes. There is a second-order stream located in the north track, and a third-order stream located in the southern track. The second-order stream shall have a minimum average buffer width of 105 feet on each side, with a stream side zone of 35, a middle zone of 45, and an outer zone of 25. The third-order streams will have a minimum buffer width of 125 on each side, with a stream side zone of 35, a minimum, excuse me, a minimum zone of 65, and an outer zone of Elevations, the applicant's application includes two styles of duplex, one will be used with the northern track and the other with the southern track. Driveways and sidewalks, each duplex will have one garage, but each duplex structure will either have two or a four-car-wide driveway, creating me as five parking units on the side of two street segments, not having sidewalks, and three parking spaces for some of the units that, that do have sidewalks. And the reason being is you're, when you park them head-on, you're only going to be able to get two in without anyone hanging over a sidewalk where the streets where there is not a sidewalk, you can do four in where you have two cars wide. Streets and access, the two track areas will be accessed by the dead-end right-of-way squaring with Jackson Drive in a right angle, where the existing break in the median is midway along that S curve on Jackson Drive. Landscaping, a berm and associated landscaping per code will be provided in the rear yards of the lots abutting the Jackson Drive rights-of-way. Responsibility and descriptions of the earthwork and the plantings will be described in the CCNRs required to be recorded with the first final plat. Further, these improvements will be indicated on all the plot plans, which, which they provide with their building permits for the individual homes. A recorded deed restriction and other types of guarantee will be necessary to prevent the required berm screening from being removed. Covenants, the CCNRs, a copy of the CCNRs will be recorded with the first final plat. As far as any CIP investments, the city does not have any capital improvements projects planned for this area at this time. So going through the pictures here, basically we're, we're on Artie Mize, looking south, and that's Jackson Drive there to the southeast of us. This is that C-2 commercial corner. Okay, this is facing southwest, looking down, Artie Mize. And then this is at the corner of Jackson Drive and Artie Mize, looking west. It's the corner of Jackson Drive and Artie Mize, looking south. And then this is looking at the intersection, looking across at that wooded lot that's across there, that zone commercial that's not developed. And then this is looking back at the old airport property and those industrial properties that are there to the northeast. And then this is looking at the airport industrial park, you know, looking, that vacant lot that's on the corner, that, the intersection there on the northwest. And there's another view of that. And then here's, facing west, looking at the proposed northern R-12 region, and then facing south and southwest, looking at the proposed northern R-12 region. And then this is facing south and southeast, looking across the proposed northern R-12 region. This is facing north between the northern R-12 street and the southern R-12 cul-de-sac. This is facing north up Jackson Drive. This is facing east onto the proposed R-12 cul-de-sac. This is facing south down Jackson Drive, or more actually southwest. Recommendation, staff recommends approval of this rezoning and preliminary plat request. Approval of the preliminary plat shall include the following conditions. Number one, the preliminary plat approval is subject to the approval of the rezoning case 24-119 zoning Jackson Drive and Artie Mize Road. A request by Jim Pollard to rezone the property from C-2 general commercial and R-6 single-family residential to C-2 general commercial and R-12 two-family residential. Number two, provide a revised drawing labeled preliminary plat instead of preliminary development plan, showing all the items required for a final plat, except addresses, signature blocks, plus all structures, improvements, berms, landscaping, and driveways. In other words, improvements shouldn't be on the preliminary plat, or on the final plat, I'm sorry. Number three, a copy of the CCNRs shall be recorded with the first final plat and include the maintenance of the berms and required landscaping. Number four, the berm and associated landscaping per the UDO shall be provided in the rear yards of the lots abutting Jackson Drive rights-of-way. Responsibility and descriptions of the earthwork and planting shall be described in the CCNRs required to be recorded with the first final plat. Further, these improvements will be indicated on all the plot plans. The recorded deed restrictions or other types, type of guarantee will be necessary to prevent the required berm screening from being removed. Number five, the development shall meet the parking requirements of City Code Section 14-501-05 while not obstructing sidewalks. Paved area in front or side yards shall meet City Code Section 14-501-10B. Number six, excuse me, the development entrances shall meet minimum site distance requirements prior to the recording of the first final plat. Number seven, lots encroaching on the floodplain shall require development floodplain permits and compliance to City FEMA regulation. Adherence to stream buffer setbacks shall be required. And number eight, this preliminary plat, excuse me, this preliminary plat has not been reviewed for final engineering design compliance. All developed engineering must be designed in accordance with the City of Independence standards and specifications prior to approval of the final plat. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
Right. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Sure.
Commissioner?
Is there any difference in this report between a townhome and a duplex?
I mean, I think, I think people are loose with those definitions. I think for, I think a lot of times people refer to townhomes, they're talking about condominium-style ownership of attached single-family, although that's not necessarily the case. You can condoize anything, an apartment building, a duplex, a fourplex, or a string of attached single-family homes. You know, the official definition of a, of a townhouse is different than a duplex. A townhouse is a single, a single unit that's actually maybe has, shares a wall or some, or their walls touch, and they have zero lot lines. But I think a townhouse is usually attached to single-family, and sometimes people use that loosely to mean fourplexes and duplexes sometimes.
Well, I'm not trying to sound mean, but since you wrote the report, what, what did you mean? Townhouse?
They, they are duplexes.
They are duplexes?
They are duplexes. He calls, the applicant called them townhouses, they are duplexes.
Okay. Also, on some of these, she serves this, like a red driveway shown on some of these?
Right.
And not shown on others. So, can you explain?
Those were the samples on particular lots that the applicant chose to show the coverage of what would be the paved, drive area. We're going to need more detail before we do a final development plan, and they will have to meet our percentage requirements for green space in the front yard, as well as the parking requirements for residents and guests.
Do you know if this driveline is going to be a private driveline or a public road?
These are public streets.
Okay. That's all I guess I have for now.
All right. Any other commissioners?
Chair.
Commissioner Nesmet?
Brian, why are you guys bringing this for recommendation when you guys don't even approve it as you wrote it and as, as what you approved, what you presented to us? Because you said it's not ready to be approved, but you want us to approve it.
This is, I mean, the applicant came forward and, with this application, and the reason we have so many conditions that are written into the preliminary plat here is that there, there was some more detail that we wanted to see better than what they had on their preliminary development plan.
So what I'm saying, should we postpone this until it comes back with better renderings from architectural drawings to be approved before we move forward? That's what I'm asking, because it sounds like to me that needs to be done.
I mean, they are risking, if, if they cannot create a final, or a final plat and cannot develop the site as they've indicated here, that they may have to come back with a new preliminary plat.
Well, what I'm saying is that if we approve this preliminary plat, you guys come back to us for a final plat, we never really get to see the drawings. I mean, you give us the drawings, but it goes through its consent agenda and goes through without any talking. That's why I'm saying, I'd like to see the final, not final, but I'd like to see better renderings, especially on the driveways and the parking areas, because right now, I am against because of the parking areas. I can tell you that much right now. And I'd like to see something better done with what needs to be done. It sounds like to me they need to do the berms better, according to you guys, so we need to have all that stuff in drawings. It's a fine project. If I'm not mistaken, isn't it right up west of there is where they're doing that other?
Yeah, it's, actually, it's immediately east, and of course, it's, it's at the discretion of the planning commission if you want to continue and ask for more, so.
I'm, that's where I'm leaning for, but I mean, we can prove the first rezoning, that's fine, but I'm saying for the plat, I'd like to see it come back. That's my opinion. So that's where I'm sitting at. I mean, Chair, you can move on with whatever we need to do.
Well, I'd say we at least talk.
I was going to say, there would be benefit in inviting the applicant up to maybe have him share more about some of these questions. So is the applicant present? Go ahead and come up. Would you state your name and your home address, please?
Jim Pollard, 3030 South Crenshaw Road, Independence, Missouri.
Can you speak up just a little bit for us?
Yes, ma'am.
Do it again?
Yes, please.
Jim Pollard, 3030 South Crenshaw Road, Independence, Missouri, 64057.
So, I'd like to go ahead and hear from you, what we need to know, and feel free to go ahead and address some of the questions that have already been asked.
Okay. Let me give a short little presentation of what I think you might be interested in. I have a similar project on Powell Road, and there's 20 units already done. It's, it sold real well. Out of those 20 units, I'll say they're three-bedroom, two-full bath, LTL flooring, granite countertops, they're, they're very nice. We have a homeowner association, paid quarterly $210 per quarter, which takes care of the berms, the yard work, the trash removal, fertilizing. We don't do snow, but everything else is, is covered there. They're built pretty well maintenance-free, we hope, as far as maintenance-free could be. And it might be an interesting note, out of, out of the people that live there, 13 of them are retired people who, eight of them have lost their spouse, they want a place that's all on one level, they don't have to mow the yard, et cetera, et cetera. There is, was a professional ballplayer living there, but he got traded, so now he's renting his two units out. There's one schoolteacher, one person who works across the street, and two other students. So, thought it was interesting that who's going to live there, I don't know, but in this other project not very far away, that's kind of the combined. As far as, you know, your consideration, it is, from my standpoint, like you said, if I can't get the zoning, there's no sense in me spending all the money to get, you know, preliminary plat. So I would, you know, appreciate that consideration on the zoning, and we've met with the city. There's a couple of things I don't understand about why they want something in writing that the berms will not be taken out, which maybe he could, Brian could help, help me with, but, you know, there's going to be a berm there that's pictured, the, the city has requirements for those berms to be landscaped, we're going to put in trees and maple and try to make it, we'll make it look very nice, we'll have it sprinkled. The driveways, I may try to go get a variance for the driveways. If I make the driveways two foot wider, then two cars can park there. Two foot, you know. Some of the lots will, will take those, that's what, on the plat, we were asked to put the driveways in, with some lots are different angles, so we've put, given an example of those lots on the plat. That's what you're seeing with the red lines there. What were the other questions?
What else would you like us to know?
That's about it for me. I just, you know, on the engineering of the preliminary plat, it's, this is pretty detailed that you have there. I don't know if you have all this, I'm sure you do, but we've done a lot of work and redid it two or three times, so whatever your consideration would be there. But again, you know, if I can't get the rezoning, I don't want to spend, you know, all the money to do all this, but anybody, have any questions for me?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Looks like it's pretty tight quarters in there for, for these units. How confident are you that, that you can put them in there? And all the landscaping, and all the berms, and without, and I don't know, the road curve, so there's a line of sight issue perhaps? Have you looked into that?
Yeah, my, in fact, my engineers here, they did the study, and he can explain that study to you if you'd like for him to, which may help. And yeah, I think we could have those units, and that's pretty well the same spacing as my other project is, and several other projects like that, so I don't see a problem in there.
Would the engineer like to come forward? Have you been sworn in?
I have.
State your name and your address, please.
I need this down, just a little lower than Jim.
Yeah, you can move the whole thing down.
Yeah, my name's Kevin Sterrett, I'm with HG Consult Engineering. My home address is 1411 Northeast Todd George, Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've, we've got a lot more.
Please speak into the mic only, so just pull it down.
There we go.
There you go.
Yeah, we've got a lot of detail on these drawings that I think are above and beyond more than what's normally, you know, required at a preliminary stage. We've identified, labeled all the, the berming that's going to be needed. Those red deals there are just examples of different configurations of lots of how that drive would have to go on there in order to meet that maximum coverage percentage of the front yard that they require. That was how we addressed that. But we, again, other than labeling it a preliminary plat, we called it a preliminary development plan, we could have changed that name at any time and just called it a preliminary plat, but I believe we've addressed all the detail that we've had numerous, as Jim said, numerous meetings, calls with the staff, and I think we have addressed all their comments to get to this point, to get a preliminary plat approved. So, again, additional detail on plot plans, showing the driveways and all that on every individual lot can be shown at that stage as well. But at a scale that we're doing here for this, this is just showing how these, these duplexes fit on the lot. Yes, they are a little tight, no doubt, but they do physically fit on there even with the berming that we're showing on there. And we've given, we've given cross-sections showing that, and then as far as the line of sight, we've also, one of our drawings, we've clearly shown that, that we're meeting that requirement as well.
All right, thank you. I do have a question, Mr. Pollard. Are you confident, based on that long list of recommendations or conditions that would have to be a part of this? And I think maybe you had said earlier, you didn't understand some of the requirements. They are because they're part of our code. So, 1.4 parking spaces is a requirement. What happens if it's 1.3 when you get all done because of the, the very, you know, small, or what'd you call it, that, you know, just a very squeezed-in position? So, I understand the desire to rezone, so you can move forward, but I, that's a long list of conditions. I just kind of like to hear from you.
Well, I, one of my pet peeves is, and I've done a few of these projects, one of my pet peeves is people parking on the street. And I don't want to, I mean, your code, the city code is good, but, you know, we want to kind of go beyond that. In my restrictions, it's plainly states that, you know, there's no parking on the streets allowed over two-hour period, and, you know, I don't see any, I think we've already met all the requirements for the 1.4, you know, parking area with the city, but again, that's, that's one of my pet peeves, and, and I've addressed it in the restrictions. And the only other thing I don't understand is why, in my covenants and restrictions, which I've never before put any language in, that this berm will never be removed. I can certainly do that. I just haven't seen any berms removed anywhere, you know, that's, I would think we'd have to get, whoever, we'd have to get city permission to do such, but it's not a big deal, I can put it in, I just don't know why that's a requirement. I've never, I've developed a lot in Independence and I've never had that requirement before, is why I question it. But like I say, it's not a big deal, I'll put it in there.
Did it answer your question?
It did. So Brian, could you address that for everyone? It, it's because of the spacing to the road, is it not?
Well, I mean, that's what leads to the situation, but it's, it's particularly because they're putting it, the berm is on private lots and it actually is not on a common space. And so we're concerned that individual property owners that own these individual duplex lots will do something to their portion of that berm post-construction.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Mr. Pollard, you're asking for two types of zoning for this property, and I'm curious about the C2 part of it. It looks like you're setting aside land that runs adjacent to R D Mize for that purpose. Is that correct?
Wasn't that already so, C2? Yeah, I'm not really trying to.
C2 is the commercial zoning.
Yeah, it actually already exists. What he's doing is, it would shrink it behind the center of the, of that stream buffer.
Right.
Anyway, that was zoned, that prior to, I'm really just.
So what do you, what do you envision taking, you know, taking it, what do you envision in that zoning space? I'm thinking in terms of, you know, that there are no grocery stores even close to that location. A grocery store would be absolutely perfect for there.
If it would meet the, the land restrictions, you know, there's a part of that stream buffer ordinance that I can't get, you know, used to, but, you know, anything, I mean, you know, there's four lots down the street, commercial, or, you know, C2, and then across the road, there's C2. So yeah, neighborhood grocery store would be great. You know, I, I'm hard-pressed to come up with, you know, in Johnson County, they did that and had a lot of neat neighborhood things, you know, a.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, I couldn't come up with a better answer.
All right. Any additional questions for the applicant? Commissioner Nesmet?
So basically, you would say that if we can get two more feet on these driveways, we can park two cars. Is that correct? And, but because of our restriction on green space, we cannot get that, is that what you're saying?
Well, some lots you can, depends on how the lots are configured, but.
Is that the deal, Brian?
That is one of our concerns, because we were, they gave us examples, but they didn't do these calculations for every single lot.
Okay.
On, on, on the street.
But I will say that it makes a lot nicer area, you know, that, that two feet makes it all the difference.
Well, yes, it does.
the difference.
Well, yes, it does make it a lot nicer. That's why I'm, that's why I'm wondering, is there something we need to say right now to help you get that two feet, or is it something that we cannot do?
I think Rick could give me a variance now.
I don't look to Rick.
And again, it makes it such a nicer.
So we, we can't necessarily do a variance on that. I mean, ultimately, the development has to meet that 1.4 parking stalls per unit. So the entirety of the site would have to make sure that we meet those parking requirements. Ultimately, that, one of the, one of the things I'll also have to make sure of, so we also have a section of the code that only allows up to 40% of the front yards to be covered in concrete. So 60% has to be essentially green space, so they'll have to be able to meet that as well. Does that mean that each lot can have that? Again, not entirely certain, but that will be part of the code that they'll have to meet with this preliminary plat.
Okay. So basically, we can, well, I'm just, I guess, because we don't get to see it, you guys are going to make sure it happens.
Correct.
Okay.
And keep in mind, if it doesn't meet that, so any of the final plat would have to be substantially similar to the preliminary plat. If it is such that things need to change to the point where it may have to come back as a revised preliminary plat, then we will essentially cross that bridge if we get to that. But again, they, part of the preliminary plat is, these are the conditions, they'll have to meet that when they start doing the engineering design.
Would they have to come back if, say, they have to take one unit out to meet all the widths and everything? Would that have to come back to us, or would that be okay?
So the spirit of the code and how that's written is essentially, it kind of gives us some wiggle room up to about 10% of the changes. So we will have to look and see if that meets that threshold.
Like 10% of 30 homes, it would be three, so that's.
Yeah, so again, substantially compliant, the final plat would have to be substantially compliant with the preliminary plat.
Okay, that, that helps. Thank you.
So based on hearing that, Mr. Pollard, if, would the project still be viable to you if substantial changes had to be made in the number of units? The, the need for maybe a parking lot versus increased double parking spaces, et cetera?
Yeah, you know, I, that piece of ground, you know, I've owned for a while and to the, it's got three complexes on the west side of it, there's really not a lot of things, alternatives I have to do with the ground. So you can answer your question, yes, I would more than likely, unless it was just tremendously cut up, I would go ahead and develop it if it was three or, or deleted from it, yeah.
Okay. Any additional questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the galley who would like to speak in approval for this case? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition for this case? All right, hearing none. I'll close the hearing.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we approve case 24-100-19, rezoning Jackson Drive and Artemis Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Sure, why not?
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley?
Yes. From a vote of seven to zero, the rezoning has been approved. Do we have the second part of this case?
I have a question before we do the second part of the case.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we approved the zoning, do we, what if we don't approve this? What if we want to have it come back to us? What's the point of us being here?
Well, anybody who would develop.
If it just goes to council and they don't.
Anybody who would develop that property for R12 purposes would have to come to you with a preliminary plat.
Yeah, but if we approve it, you just basically said it would go, you guys would see it, you guys would make sure, I trust you, I guess, you know, trust but verify, right? So what's the issue of us seeing it again if he has to come before you anyway and show a better preliminary plat?
Rick, can you address?
You understand what I'm, am I confusing you?
I guess I'm not, I mean, if it's substantially like he, different from.
Well, we've already, we have a bunch of questions about it.
So it, it, let's say.
If he's got to, if he's got to bring one back to you anyway, why can't we see it?
Well, so the difference would be.
I'm okay with him putting homes in there, but I'd like to see how he's going to do it.
Yeah, so the difference would be if this preliminary plat, let's say, gets approved, they would have to go through, do their engineering design. Their engineering design would have to meet those codes specifications. And if it does, then really, it's kind of a non-issue at that point. So it meets it, it got approved that way, the final plat would essentially come back through here. The final plat always still has to come back through planning, commission, and council. So if you approve this, let's say, tonight, and it doesn't meet that, then we will have to come back with a new preliminary development plan, or preliminary plat. So if it comes back as a final plat, then that means by default it met the conditions once the engineering's done. It's a little bit different here because, you know, again, as their engineer stated, this isn't the stage for engineering. This isn't really the final stage for engineering. This is kind of that stage of what are you planning to put there? What is your preliminary plat? Does this meet most of the conditions? Do we have concerns? I mean, yes, it's a very tight development. We know that it's going to be, it's going to really come down to feet to make sure that everything can fit in here. And if you, so you could delay it, and you could, let's say, postpone the approval, but really, at the end, they're just going to be really spending more time trying to get more detail into that, which is really getting more into that engineering portion. So, but yeah, for tonight, you're essentially approving a preliminary developer, preliminary plat for this developer on this project.
But Rick, to clarify, we're doing that with all the conditions attached.
Correct.
And if any change is necessary or more than 10%, that preliminary plat no longer is valid, and they would have to bring a new preliminary plat.
Correct. And understand too, I say 10%, there's a lot of conditions that have to meet within 10%, but like, for example, if they have to change the road, there's not a real percentage associated with that. If their access changes, and that does substantially change the preliminary plat, that type of thing. So I don't know if that kind of answers your question, but if you, if you approve it, it still will have to come back as a final plat, because they will still have to final plat it. So you will see this again, and if it's a final plat, we will, but like I said, by default, it will have met these, these code conditions. Does that make sense?
No. It sounds like you're, I'm sorry, maybe it's just, it's probably just me.
Yeah, because there's two, there's two stages. There's the preliminary plat stage, which is what this is. They'll have to do the engineering design. That engineering design will have to meet the code requirements.
And if it meets code requirements, then what happens?
Then they go through the final plat. The final plat's the actual plat that gets recorded with the council.
The final plat does what? Goes where?
And that comes before this commission as well as council as well.
Okay, because it didn't sound like that.
Yes, yeah, it still comes before this commission and council.
That's fine, that's the only clarification I wanted. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
I make a motion to approve case 24-310-05, Jackson Drive and Artemis, Jackson Place, preliminary plat.
Second.
I have a first and second. Would you call the vote?
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley?
Yes. And case number 24310-05 is approved seven to zero. All right, and thank you for your patience. We call our last case for the night on short-term rental.
All righty.
Case number 2440020, short-term rental at 3912 Circle Drive. A report from the staff, please.
So this is a application for short-term rental, as you had just described. The applicant, Adam Austin, the owner of the Flipping Realist Real Estate LLC, seeks to operate a short-term rental in Independence. The vicinity map shows the property is bound by 39th Street to the north, Sterling Avenue to the west, and US 40 Highway to the south. The aerial overview shows proximity to other short-term rentals and well within the 500-foot buffer required by city code. Here's a floor plan of the main level, the front porch on the right side, the living room, kitchen, dining room, two bedrooms, one bath, stairways leading up to the second story with two additional bedrooms, and a floor plan of the basement showing one additional bedroom, another living room, another bathroom, kitchen, and the laundry room. Fire safety plan shows exits to the back door and exits to the front door, exits down the stairs from the second story, and exits up the stairs, out the front door to, in the main level, and an exit out the back door in the basement. The parking plan indicates two available parking spaces in the existing driveway, one proposed additional parking space and a proposed driveway addition, and one space for street parking in the front of the house. Here is the notification area map indicating which property owners would have received notification of tonight's public hearing. The applicant seeks approval by the planning commission to legally use this property as a short-term rental. The subject property was originally platted in 1942 as Lot 128 of the High Ridge Residential Subdivision. As part of the High Ridge resurvey of lots 123 to 131, this property's legal description was updated to Lot 141 of the Highway, High Ridge Residential Subdivision. At the time the property was originally platted, it was located outside of Independence City limits. The subdivision would not be annexed into the city until 1956. In 1965, the land was zoned R1 for single-family residential use. In 1980, the zoning was updated to R1B, remaining single-family. And in 2009, when the current version of the UDO was adopted, the zoning was, again, updated to R6, remaining single-family. The zoning of the property has remained unchanged since this update in 2009, and the property has been zoned for single-family residential use since the city's adoption of its development The single-family residence sits on a lot 10,912 square feet in size, about a quarter of an acre. The lot has 67 feet of street frontage. In 1967, a storm sewer easement was recorded encompassing the southern 15 feet of the property. The structure is 1,288 square feet and was built in 1951. It features a covered front porch, a back deck, and vinyl siding. The main floor has a living room, kitchen, dining room, bathroom, and two bedrooms. The second story contains two bedrooms. The basement level includes a living room, a laundry room, a second kitchen area, one bedroom, and one bathroom. One of the two kitchens will need to be removed prior to the issuance of a business license. There is a one-car-wide driveway beginning from the northeast corner of the property that can accommodate two vehicles. The area surrounding the subject property features other single-family residences of similar age, size, and design. The property is located to the northeast of the Sterling and US 40 highway intersection. The driveway is one-car width wide, the driveway can accommodate two vehicles. There is enough street frontage to allow for one additional vehicle. The applicant will need to add an additional parking space on the property to conform with city code 1442418 parking. The driveway repairs will require a right-of-way permit with a pavement and repair plan installed per the approved permit prior to the issuance of a business license. Any non-conforming parking surface will need to be removed prior to the approval of a business license. The property owner has indicated on their application that they are in Lee Summit, Missouri, and will be acting as the responsible agent in accordance with city code. The applicant has indicated they will be submitting a subscribing to a noise monitoring service for $10 a month. This service will provide them two separate sensors, which will automatically alert the app user when the noise level reaches a set amount. The noise monitoring system will, shall comply with city code. The applicant must address the following topics: noise monitoring, as I've just described, trash removal, the applicant intends to utilize the service of Ted's Trash, the property listing, sorry, excuse me, the property will be listed on Airbnb, Verbo, and Booking.com. The applicant will oversee site security and general business operations, including screening of customers and coordinating bookings. The city's short-term rental checklist was signed by the applicant covering licensing, future inspections, insurance, onsite information postings, and so forth. A fire evacuation plan has been submitted along with a floor plan of the house. The fire escape plan must also be posted per city code requirement. The property must be inspected by the fire inspector and pass the initial short-term rental fire and life safety inspection. The applicant must submit a parking plan with required permits to the city before installing any pavement. Any pavement, any existing pavement that is non-conforming must be removed prior to the approval of a business license. Pictures of the property facing west, looking at the front building facade and front porch, looking north of the street, facing northeast across the street, east up the street, west looking down Circle Drive there, west again looking directly at the property, can see landscape paver stones that will be required to be removed, and a construction detail plan will have to be submitted to the city with approved pavement, either concrete, asphalt, or approved paver stones. And staff recommends approval of the short-term rental with the following conditions: the short-term rental shall obtain a business license; the short-term rental operator shall remit transient guest tax to the city and comply with the operational standards outlined in Article 3, Chapter 5 of the city code; the business must comply with all safety and other standards established by Section 14424 of the city code; the maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to eight persons in total; the maximum number of bedrooms shall be four; a noise monitoring system conforming to all city code shall be installed and activated; the Good Neighbor Guidelines evacuation plan and other notices must be properly posted; the property must be inspected by the fire inspector and pass an initial short-term rental fire and life safety inspection; the existing driveway will need to be repaved prior to the issuance of the business license; an additional off-street parking space must be added to the existing driveway to meet city code requirements outlined in 14424; a parking plan with a right-of-way permit will need to be approved by the Community Development Department and Municipal Services Department before work commences; the second commission, kitchen will. The second kitchen will need to be removed prior to the issuance of a business license. The maximum allowed number of bedrooms is four. One of the bedrooms on the main level, second level, or basement will need to be removed. Any bedrooms inhabitable spaces located in the basement shall meet the city's building and fire codes, including but not limited to ventilation, ingress and egress, or be removed. And that concludes the staff's presentation.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present? Go ahead and come on up. Were you sworn in, sir?
I was not.
All right, if you would raise your right hand. Do you promise to tell, swear to tell as much of, let me start over. Do you swear to tell the truth as best as you know it?
Yes, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. State your name and your home address, please.
My name is Adam Austin, and I live at 622 Southwest Lamond's Lane, Lee Summit, Missouri, 64082.
All right, thank you. What would you like us to know about this?
The first thing, I guess, I need to know is I kind of messed up already then because I already, we already asphalted in the driveway, in the second driveway. I do have pictures of it. Basically, if you would go back to the slideshow you had, the pavers are gone. They're actually now on the outside of the asphalt, and it's asphalted from the street all the way up to the mailbox right there. So I'm not sure what I need to do now, Madam Chairman, but I did not get a permit before we put the asphalt in, so.
All right. What else would you like us to know?
I think they covered everything, so that's... Oh, well, we can address that if you have any more questions.
All right, any questions for the applicant?
Yes, Chair.
Commissioner?
Okay, so you said you already asphalted from where to where? I'm looking at a picture here, right here in front of me.
Commissioner, if you look very carefully, you can see kind of where we dug, about an inch to an inch and a half. You can see the paver stones kind of towards the back. And you can barely see it, but you can tell that there's a path that leads, that kind of does, the driveway right here, it kind of does this number. I have a picture of, I don't know if you'd want to look at it. I have a picture of it complete now on my phone, if you wanted to look at that.
Well, your application shows parking two cars on the concrete driveway. Then you had a driveway, then you're parking on the street. That's what your application shows, correct?
Yes.
So is that, I mean, so I'm trying to figure out, did you take the driveway, I want to say to the left of the concrete driveway, did you make it wide enough to put a whole car there and all the way to the street?
Yes, Commissioner, the driveway as it is in that picture is gone. It's asphalt now, and then the offshoot to the left is asphalt as well.
So you went ahead and off-shooted it to the porch, what you're saying?
Yes, Commissioner, yes.
Okay. Because what I see, according to pictures I'm seeing, there's no way to park a car on the street with the people parking across the street. So there's no way to park a car on the street. So then my next question's going to be, which bedroom are you taking out?
Probably one of the ones upstairs, those are the smaller ones.
Well, okay, how big's the second bedroom on the main level?
They are, the upper ones, I'm not, again, I have pictures on my phone of it, but the smaller bedrooms are definitely the ones upstairs.
So that bedroom two is not small, according to your drawing. Looks like the bathroom's bigger than the bedroom.
It is not to scale, Commissioner.
Okay. I was just wondering, I'm going, wow, that bedroom looks small compared to the bathroom. That's why I was trying to figure out if that's the one you took out.
Applicant, everything you say has to be on the recording, but if you would like to come up here and show us your driveway and walk in front of the commissioners, that would be fine.
Gabe, what's this, what can he do since he did not get a permit to widen the driveway?
Yeah, so after conferring with Rick, staff will inspect the new pavement and determine if any permits are required. So the right-of-way approach that the driveway... So we did ask the applicant to repave the existing driveway because of the spalting, the cracking.
Yeah, I can see that, but, okay.
So, yeah, staff will inspect and make any determinations if additional permits are required.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and walk by with that. Okay, why don't we go ahead and go back to the microphone then? And Commissioner Asfaw?
What are the standards an asphalt driveway has to meet as far as how thick?
That is a great question that I am not as well-versed on. I would like to confer with Rick on this one.
Please do.
So what we would be inspecting is what's in the right-of-way. So if it's an asphalt driveway, so if it's a concrete, for example, we have to have six inches of concrete. If it's asphalt, it'll have to have four inches in there. And so that's what we'll be doing the inspection on, if it's necessary. But I believe we will have to look at that because I think he'll have to go all the way to the right-of-way.
What happens, Rick, if we approve this and you find out it's not to code?
Then we'll basically give the applicant a notification that he needs to bring it up to code. And so typically, what'll happen when things like that already occur, we'll have them dig out the sides of it so we can actually determine the actual depth of the material. And if it looks deficient, then we'll tell them that they'll have to redo that section in the right-of-way.
All right, thank you.
Chair.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Okay, are you okay with doing all the recommendations that staff has presented here?
Yes, I am. I do have a question, though. I know that in other municipalities, if someone lives there and rents from you, you can get a license through the city to Airbnb the other parts out. Is that something that Independence allows?
I'll let you address that, City.
In this case, that would not be an allowed use of the subject property. So this is a single-family residence, a single-family use, and renting it out to multiple different parties would not be allowed, either short-term or long-term rental.
Sorry, sir, in other municipalities such as Kansas City and Metro, they, if someone rents from you, then you can rent out the rest of the house. So if someone rents from you and they rent a room, they are able to rent the rooms they are not using. In fact, for Kansas City, it has to be done that way because they don't allow short-term rentals, period, unless someone lives there and rents the other rooms that are not occupied by them.
Staff, who would like to take that?
Yeah, so unfortunately, that is not an approved use in Independence if it's allowed in other municipalities, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Chair, I have one. The question I had was, the applicant's address is Lee Summit, but owner's address, which is the same name, is Utah. I'm just curious, where do you live?
I live in Lee Summit. Yeah, I saw that as well, sir. I didn't, I don't know why that was. I don't know if they pulled that, where that address came from.
So you don't live in Utah?
No, I don't live in Utah, no.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other commissioners? Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who would like to speak in favor? All right, are there any persons who wish to speak in opposition? Did I see a hand? All right. Step forward. Have you been sworn in?
Yes.
All right, I do need to read a statement first. So for any persons who wish to speak in opposition to the application of those persons having questions on the application, please step forward to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Again, please remember to address all comments and questions to the chair. Keep them brief and to the point. If your statement or question has already been made, please do not repeat it. Simply indicate your agreement to the question or concern. Furthermore, if you were not sworn in, let me know. All right, go ahead and proceed with your name and your address.
Okay, Jesse Stamps, 11205 East...
Can you speak up quite a bit? Thank you.
Jesse Stamps, 11205 East Foria Street South, Independence, Missouri. And I say no because I have a seven-year-old daughter that we live around the corner from. It would increase the traffic, and with Airbnb, you do not do screenings for the people. It's a safety concern for me.
Okay, anything else you'd like to share?
Increase in traffic and eight people. I've seen parties at other Airbnbs, so I just prefer not to have it.
Okay, and where do you live in regards to it?
Sterling, like, I'm closer to the, as soon as you pull in, to the 40 Highway in Sterling.
Okay.
Like, right across the street from the QuickTrip. QuickTrip's there, there's another gas station, you pull in, and that's how you come into that neighborhood subdivision.
All right, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak in opposition? Go ahead and step forward. And please state your name and your address.
Chastity Velazquez, 3904 Circle Drive, Independence, Missouri.
What would you like us to know?
That was kind of, is around the same line of thought, is I have children also. And with the transient population like that just coming in and out, there's no guarantees that those people aren't child molesters or some sort of criminals that are around your children. And then also with the neighborhoods, they don't take accountability for the way the property looks. They don't pick up trash. They don't think about partying noises and all of that like we do when we live there the whole time. You know, we take pride in our neighborhoods. So that was one of the things that I wanted to address. And the traffic and just the noise, I know they say they have the noise detectors or whatever for them, but if they're not close to where they're at, they're not going to be able to do anything to stop them, you know, after a while. He lives clear in Lee Summit, so it would take him a little while to get over there to do anything if his guests were to get out of hand at any time.
All right, thank you.
Chair, could I ask her a question? Ma'am?
Go ahead.
No, I'm, yeah, ma'am. Has the property been improved at all since you live around? I mean, I did not drive by. I didn't know what it looked like before. But has that property been improved, or is it still, I mean, I like to own by the pictures I see on my phone.
The driveway looks like an improvement. The rest of it's about the same. From the outside, it looks like the same.
Okay, that's what I'd like to know. Thank you.
Yes, if the applicant would like to come back up and address any concerns raised?
I will understand their concerns, and I would say that my biggest fear would be having someone in there and destroying the property. We have put well over $40,000, we're over, actually, we're $50,000 into the property as of right now. We want it to be, we have, in my opinion, the neighbors have, the direct neighbors have appreciated what we're doing because we have greatly improved the property in the inside. We put brand-new fencing up, the pavement, we cut the trees back. And I get their concerns. I understand if I had a daughter too. But in my opinion, the house across the street is completely abandoned, and there's a very transient homeless population. Just, you know, once you get to QuickTrip, down that road, under that bridge, I don't know if you're familiar with the Lowe's and Walmart and is that... So between at least that young lady's address and my address, there's, in my opinion, a bigger fear of transient people that would make problems than my, than the people who would visit my Airbnb would cause.
What about the concerns for the noise and monitoring? Can you address those?
I would say to that, that I am sensitive to that. If it's in my neighborhood as well, I can appreciate their concerns. But again, I don't want noisy neighbors, people in my house that could destroy it. That's not what I want, is big parties where we have to spend a bunch of money cleaning up, where there's holes in the sheet rock and a bunch of other things. Actually, when they were out of the property and asked if they wanted to come in and just kind of take a look at everything we've done. And like I said, we've put, you know, $40,000, $50,000 into it. So it is greatly improved, in my opinion. So that is, in my opinion, noise and partying is correlated to destruction. And that is not something that, that is my biggest concern as someone who's put as much money as I have into the place. So I do appreciate their concerns, and if I was in their shoes, I would be concerned as well. But I have those concerns as well, as I've stated, and I believe that we are going to take steps to prevent as much as we can of that.
Can you address how you're going to find your short-term rentals?
Through Airbnb and Verbo, and we will screen them because there are a lot of horror stories out there, to their credit, of Airbnb guests who do destroy things. And so I, you know, we have Ring cameras set up, and we'll have those noise things just to... And so we'll screen the tenants to make sure that they have adequate star ratings. And, yeah, we will have those precautionary measures to try to mitigate as much as possible any parties and things that are concerning to the neighborhood.
All right.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Quick question. Have you considered not renting to local people? A lot of people try to not rent to local people because they know automatically, or most often, it's going to result in a party.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. The main reason, in my opinion, that local people try to rent a place like that is to throw parties in an environment that is not their own home.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. Staff, can you, I guess, from... Have you been back over since some of the improvements have been made?
I personally have not been to the house to inspect any of the changes.
Okay. And, Gabe, can you tell us what... I know there are conditions for remaining in good standing with a short-term rental beyond what is already listed. So if there was complaints, what does that look like?
That is a great question. So we do have neighborhood, our Neighborhood Services Division that takes code enforcement complaints on property maintenance issues that arise, so tall grass and weeds, storage of materials, noise violations, that sort of thing. And I would like to defer to Rick for further clarification on that.
Rick, can you remind me what happens if the police are called, etc.?
So whenever a short-term rental, so we have a section in that code that talks about revocation of the license in the event that we get, I have to go back and look, but there's a number of complaints. I believe it's like three complaints. I may be wrong on that, but there's three complaints within a period of time. If we do have that, then that could initiate a revocation hearing here at Planning Commission if we do indeed see those violations.
So fair to say that if there's a problem, there's a way to address it?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Any additional questions for the staff?
Chair.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Could we add one more?
Recommendation?
Recommendation that they put up a sign of no street parking? Because there, I looked at that, and I do not want any street parking with that, that the tenant, the applicant would have to do it?
Yeah, so we can include in the recommendation for approval that they cannot park their car on the street.
I would like to see that added.
Would that also limit the number of occupants that could stay in the short-term rental, though? though?
They would have to meet the parking requirement before being issued a business license.
Okay.
So the number of bedrooms limit the number of occupants. Yeah, so as Rick stated, they would need to expand the driveway further and not exceed the 40% of front yard coverage, or alternatively, remove one of their bedrooms if that becomes a condition for approval, that there is no street parking allowed.
Let me address the street parking. Residents can't let in street parking.
Okay.
That's up to the city.
Well, I meant, he needs to post it on his Airbnb.
He can...
Because we've had that happen before.
You could advertise it on the B and B, but you can't put any signs up that would let in.
Right, no, that's what, because we've had that done before on a short-term rental.
You could certainly put it on the Airbnb and say that this is our recommendation, that there's no street parking and...
Right.
But, yeah, there's no way to really enforce that.
All right, yeah, there's no way to force that, but I'm just saying that he needs to post that on his posting, what I'm saying. That way, that way, because there, I saw a picture there, if somebody parks across the street and they park here, nobody's getting a car through there. So I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I think that the best way to address it, just like, is expand the driveway or reduce the bedrooms, and then that, the parking requirement is attached to the number of bedrooms, so one parking, one parking space per bedroom.
Okay, so we need to address that, which recommendation is that, then?
So the recommendation to, it's the parking requirement, and I have to go back to the recommendation.
Nine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we need to make sure that has enough parking off-street per bedroom. So how are we need to reword that, please?
So Rick recommended, instead of one additional off-street parking, the recommendation for approval would state two additional off-street parking spaces.
Okay, that'd be fine.
And then upon staff inspection of the existing pavement as well, we can make that determination if the amount of pavement meets that condition or if additional pavement is required.
Okay, that works for me.
Anything else?
Do we need a motion for that, or are we good with this, because we're recommendations? I don't think we need a motion.
It would be a motion with recommendations.
Yeah, okay.
And I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll for a vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair Wiley?
Yes, and the motion passes. Vote of 7-0, case number 244020, short-term rental at 3912 Circle Drive, with conditions. Thank you, Mitch, for chiming in there, that was helpful. Gabe, I'm not, I think Commissioner O'Neill used the word sucking up, I'm not, you did excellent, excellent job. I'm very, very happy for you and welcome.
And I go along with that, too.
All right, do we have anything for the roundtable? Rick, I think you have good news for the commission for the end of this month.
So, yes, we don't have a meeting for the next meeting, our next one will be the October 15th.
All right, thank you very much.
That's all I got.
I'd like to give an opportunity, since not everyone spoke tonight, so Commissioner Young, anything? All right, Commissioner Torres?
No.
Commissioner O'Neill?
What's that?
Commissioner Nesbit?
No.
Commissioner Ferguson?
No.
And Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Well...
I do have one thing, and that is I've made a request, so Rick, if you can provide this for our next meeting, is the code of, for the boards and services that was voted on at the beginning of this year. I'm not sure that we have all received those, and so I want to make sure that we each know our recommendations and our expectations.
We can get you a copy of that, yes.
All right, thank you very much. And I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, and we're adjourned. Enjoy your night.